Down there.
Yeah, that the rattlesnake.
Can you hear me now? Did you hear me now? All right, I'd like to go ahead and call the regular meeting of the city of Chatham Hills City Council for April second, twenty twenty four to order. Let the record reflect that all council members here for tonight's meeting. Like to remind anybody who wants to make a public comment tonight to fill out a yellow comment card. You'll find those on the table up front and the city at that table. After you fill them out. Uh, if you have a cell phone, if you would, please make sure that your ringer is turned off. And uh. Let's rise to the bunch of allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item tonight is review and approval of the meeting agenda. Is there anything that we need added or changed or? Anybody? Not going to get a motion in a second to adopt the meeting agenda, please?
Make a motion to adopt the meeting agenda?
I second it.
The motion in a second and discussion and changes anybody need? Or it's at that. Everyone. On favor of adopting an agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda that's adopted. Next up is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March fifth, twenty twenty four. Can I get a motion in a second to approve those minutes, please?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Now, does anybody need anything changed or updated? If not, all those in favor of adopting the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The minutes stand adopted. We have a couple of presentations tonight. Uh, first up, we'll start with a presentation from Community Brickworks, Lisa Remley. Yes, please.
Mayor and council, thank you so much for allowing me to join you this evening. I'm just going to give you an update about where we are with Brickworks. We are the absolute. We we absolutely show what what volunteerism can do in Chattahoochee Hills. We have about forty volunteers. Give or take, and we are an all volunteer force. Without all of those volunteers and all that they do, we would be so much worse off in this community. We have a pantry, a food pantry, in case any of you didn't know. Our food pantry has seen a forty percent increase over the last year, as have all the other food pantries in the area. So it's not uncommon. We served five hundred and eighty people this last year, and two hundred and twenty of those were kids. So we're seeing a lot more families now. Um, a lot more families in crisis too. Just in the month of March, we saw a hundred, we served a hundred and eighty-two people. So I think we're trending upward instead of downward. We distributed over a hundred thousand dollars worth of food this last year. Uh, and personal items, we spent about a thousand dollars a month of our own supplementing the food that we got from Midwest Food Bank, from local churches, from people in the community. Uh, for in-kind donations, uh, so that these people could be, they could, people could feed their kids. We gave out three hundred and seventy-five milk vouchers. So they could go to to Piggly Wiggly or Smith's and get milk for their kids. We've paid out fourteen thousand this year in emergency assistance. We're seeing an uptick in difficulty with people being able to afford their rents because rents are starting to go up. So we've been helping families with rent. Our top need has been utility bills. We've been paying a lot of utility bills. Families can apply once a year for help, and we will help them. We will pay directly to the utility company or the landlord. We talk to the family, we talk to the landlord of the utility company, we figure out how we can help them. We just recently got a grant to help a little bit more, so that we're really excited about that. We gave out seventy-seven meals for Thanksgiving this year. We helped people shop for kids by pairing with families, a hundred and thirty-one kids this year. That's an all-time high. Um, and we gave out backpacks at the beginning of the school year, and we'll be giving out school supplies this next semester too. The library, which is part of Community Brickworks, is going great guns. Thank you, Nan. We are now part of the Rural Library Association. I, did you know it existed? It's a wonderful, wonderful. Uh, organization. There's a huge difference between rural libraries and urban libraries, and rural libraries are uh, kind of where it's at. I mean. Rural libraries allow people to come together in rural areas where they're kind of isolated. So we have Toddler Tuesday, which is a huge hit. Nan's got a. A a group of moms that come in with their toddlers, and they get a story, and they get a craft, and and they, and the moms get to see each other and get to talk, which is huge. We have a book club, we have a book club, we have a Girl Scout group that's going to meet here, we have um, a pu- we have a puzzle. Shelf, you can come in and swap out a puzzle. You can put your puzzle together here if you want. It's just a way for people to come into the community, come into the library and see each other. It's another meeting spot for people, and that's the difference between a rural library and an urban library. So we're working on it. Every, you'll see all kinds of new things coming out on our Facebook page and on Instagram with things that happen in the library. Nan's classes are going great guns. She's going to peel out of here in a minute to go to chair caning. It's the second one or the third one? Third one for chair caning. It's very popular. Uh, we've got the holidays events for children. Uh, book donations are still accepted. Thank you very much. Just hardback, please, and current reads. Uh, it took us a long time to go through this library, specifically Nan and her volunteers, to get this library up to stuff. So if you can, please make sure that they're current reads and not cleaning out your attic. We sure would appreciate it, but it's free to check it out. It's free to check books out, and you can keep them as long as you need to before you bring them back. We are digitalizing the books in our library so that pretty soon we're going to be in the current century. You won't have to have that card in your, in the back of your book. We're going to have uh. Everything digitalized. So they're working on that right now. That was through a grant that was given to us. Uh, and we had magazines now for the community. So you want to come in and look at sustainable farming? Uh, oh, gosh, sustainable farming, quilting, uh. Car repair. We've got magazines. If you have a magazine you really want us to subscribe to, let us know, and we'll put it on and see how people like it. You can, you can look at the magazines, and you can certainly print out uh, something that you like from the magazine that you want to take home. Um, we, I I mentioned the puzzle swap shelf. The other thing we have is community outreach services still going on. Baseball signup was uh, has finished, and baseball has started. Lila has had, has stepped down after many, many years. Lila, where are you? Uh, of wonderful service. Uh, Jennifer English has stepped into her position, and it's going great guns. Lila's helping her through as they, as they, and I think they had a nice roster of kids this year. So. That's, that is done through our website. Um, we are supporting senior lunches. We support the Chat Hills festivals. We are helping Coco's cupboard with uh, equipment that they need to capture animals in the area. Um, we are also redoing uh, the structural issues in our side of the building. Uh, I don't know if any, if you, any of you know, but. It is still the nineteen forties or fifties. Whenever the school was built, the electrical part of our heart half of the building is still the same. So. So we are having to upgrade the electrical and this, and uh, we'll put a little bit of air conditioning in so that our volunteers are a little more comfortable when they're doing the food pantry items. Thank you very much to the city for that. We appreciate that. Uh, our major fundraiser is coming up, May eighteenth. Hope you can come. Uh, you'll see banners around the city flyers here and there. It's a great time, and it's our major fundraiser of the year. We're hoping to make enough money. Uh, to really support a lot of these programs. We both do grant writing, which we do a lot of. We have these fundraising events. And we have all kinds of information on our website, new and improved, our Facebook page and our Instagram. Thank you so much. For letting us know, for letting me speak, and thank you so much for all the volunteers that we have. Thanks.
It's, it's. It's perfect that uh. We have that report. Hello? It's perfect that we have that report this week, uh, because this is, of course, Volunteer Month, and the next thing is about Volunteer Month. And uh, you know, it's, it's a. You think about this city, this exit, the city exists in great part because of volunteer effort, and so many of the things that happened in the city and the amenities of the city are a reflection of volunteer effort. And uh. Yeah, everything from Brickworks and Brickworks and the library being one of the three services the city provided at the beginning that allowed us to even be a city. Uh, you know, it's not just the services of the community, it's the services to the city as well. And so many of the assets of the city, the, the parks are a huge example too. Uh, and I'm going to have a hard time as we go through this, not particularly bragging on people like Roland, for example, uh, about the work that they do. Uh, because we've just got some amazing volunteers in the community. Um. Ruby has been putting a a great deal of effort into making sure that we recognize them. Uh, we do this on a a regular basis, so there are people that may not be getting recognized this time because they've already been recognized other times or whatever. Uh, it's hard to, it's hard to keep track of everybody that's done something in a, in a confined period, but. Anyway. We have a proclamation, which I'm going to read, and then we have some uh, awards to give out to. Uh, various groups and people that are, are our most recent set of um, super volunteers. Whereas April is National Volunteer Appreciation Month and provides an opportunity to recognize the individuals who selflessly give of their time and talents. And whereas the entire community can influence positive change with any volunteer action, no matter how big or how small. And whereas a sense of caring and desire to share have motivated many individuals to volunteer their time and serve the needs of our community. And whereas city volunteers possess many skills and talents, which they generously and enthusiastically apply to a variety of community tasks. And whereas volunteers tackle society's greatest challenges and help build stronger, more vibrant communities through their everyday actions. And whereas Chattahoochee Hills owes its existence to the tireless efforts of a generation of volunteers, generations of volunteers. And whereas so many of the physical assets and services in the city were procured and improved and continue to be upgraded and maintained by volunteers. And so many of our community services that citizens enjoy have been and are available because of those ongoing efforts of so many volunteers in so many ways. Whereas celebrating and recognizing the good people who have done and continue to do that important work is so important. Therefore, we, the mayor and city council of Chattahoochee Hills, do hereby complain, proclaim. Our gratitude and urge all of the citizens of our city to salute and thank. And it's the list of volunteers. So we're going to start going through those. We have uh, some, some things for you. Uh, and I'm going to start with several of the organizations and and businesses that have helped in different uh, levels. Uh, Community Brickworks is first on the list. Uh, and. This is going to be harder than it seems. Yay. Uh, and and Lisa, you want to? If you're here, come get your things. If you're not here, don't bother. We'll get it to you some other way. Uh, Art Farm at Serenby. Anybody hear from them? Uh, Sardis Baptist Church. And I'll tell you, if you're, yes, exactly. If you go to one of the churches, please bring it back to the church for us. Uh, Friendship Baptist Church. Come on, now, Lila, yeah? Chattahoochee South Side Church. They're on vacation, John. That's, I know there are people here to go. Providence Baptist Church. And now that I have new batteries. Uh, Team Reed, and I know somebody that works there, so I'll take it to them. That's awesome. Uh, MTB Atlanta. Roland, you want to grab that for them? The Chat Hills Convention and Visitor Bureau. Whole group of new volunteers there. Uh, none of them are here tonight. Bear Creek Nature Center. There's so much good stuff going on at Bear Creek right now. From our historic commission, uh, Brian Gross, Jean Griffith, Lila Ryan, Sarah Love, and Amber Lightsey. Actually, we can, we can give ambers up here. I think you can probably get it. Yeah, come on up, come on. Take them to their next meeting. Planning and zoning commission, Doug Cloud, Jet Hattaway, Rodney Peak, Scott Lightsey, Patrick Johnson, and Christine Gallagher. Again, some of those volunteers move around to different roles, so. Parks Commission. Pat Lesko, Roland Dawson, Diana Wilson, Clifford Bizarre, Chip Denton, and Chris Jones. And and a moment here for Clifford, who is not with us. Sadly. Guys are going to go with, some of you might get a dozen. Chattahoochee Community Outreach, which includes Amber Lightsey, Anita McGinnis, Barry Dupron, Bill Bryant, Bridget Arrington, Camille Lowe. Catherine Huston, Chip Denton, Cindy Perry, and Danielle Rose. I know at least. Yeah, we're. Uh, oh, and we'll keep going, whole other page. Emily Harrison, Elizabeth Glover, Gail King. Gigi Walker, Gloria Edwards, Jill Hines, Joanna Hannah, Joanne Wasden, Joyce Wood, Judy Walker, and Ken Langley. Harry McGinnis, I'm, I'm going to just keep rolling. Laura Richards. Lori Searle. Melinda Lively Arnold. Mandisha Thomas. Maria Hansen. Malia Brett. Nan McGuffey, again. Neshia Bryant. Nicholas Padilla. You want me to give you a second to catch up?
There's too many volunteers.
Uh, we have too many volunteers. Peachy Denton, Peter Clemens, Renee Prince. Sam Smith. Scott Beardsell. Sharon Beener. Susan Chaffin. Tanya Cole. And Tyree Smith. And then we're going to call out, uh, you know, we have uh, an amazing, small, but powerful team here at Chattahoochee Hills. All of them do amazing work in their jobs, but. Most of them do a lot of stuff outside of their work, too. They come in on weekends to help with things, events, and all of that. Uh, which includes. Uh, a certificate for. Dana Witcher, do we know who that is? Uh, awarded to Dana Witcher for outstanding community service, uh. Particularly. Penny Mitchell, I'm not sure she's here right now. Same thing for Penny. Uh, Sandy Sergeant. As well. Michelle Collings. And Robbie Rockovitz, and then also. Our entire fire, police, public works, community development, economic development departments, because everybody has done stuff outside of the call of duty there. And and. We have this long conversation about how this works, right? Rather than calling out individual names and departments and all that, but I'm still going to call out Daryl Onelet and Greg Brett. For always going above and beyond the call of duty in every possible way, and so I'm just going to do it. Thank you so much. Well, yeah, and we have certificates for all the departments here. Uh, and and we'll get those to everybody afterward. I, we could. Anyway. Thanks again to everybody who volunteers and to everybody who did not get a door prize tonight. We are always looking for more volunteers, so please feel welcome to sign up for something even tonight. Next up is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and provide their input. And opinions on any matter not scheduled for its own public hearing during tonight's meeting. Uh, we don't have any public hearings tonight, uh, so just be sure to be clear what you're talking about. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone directly to the council for stating your name and address for the record. You're allowed three minutes for your personal remarks, and I know we do have some public comment.
Mary Ellen Good.
Do I need to start over?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay.
We heard you up there.
I feel the petitioner is not being held to the same rules as the citizens of Chattahoochee Hills. Residents that have twenty acre, must have twenty acres to build one house. This plan does not fit. It calls for almost twenty buildings for under one permit. Most residents surrounding the petitioner's land are retired, longtime homeowners. I'm comparing properties, um, in comparing properties with the opposed event center. Serenby was a planned development from the start. With residents living in close proximity to each other and knew when they moved there that it would be a developed, and with the divi- the village concept. When we moved to our properties, we were buying a peaceful rural setting with no close neighbors. Cedar Grove Elementary has been closed for over twenty years, and it doesn't figure into the comparisons. The area churches are all small and don't entertain four out of seven days a week, nonstop into the night, with alcohol served with many fraternity, fraternity type parties. Or have enough members to draw over a hundred cars many times a week. I have great concern that with this proposed petition, it will not be held to the hundred and fifty people. With the extra permits allowed several times a year that allows larger crowds. I implore you to vote no on this petition and allow this longtime resident of sixty-two years. Who believed when the city was founded that I could continue to live on the land that I love in peace. And believe that when I voted for you, that you would protect us from this type of development from coming to our back door. Thank you for your time and heartfelt consideration to that. This is not your back door. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lenora Johnson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lenora Johnson at eight, seven, two, five, Wikisamia Road. I'm a concerned senior citizen of Wikisamia and Petersburg Road, a small, loving, caring, unique, quiet community. Justin Robinson has applied for a special use permit, not a permit to build a home, but to impact his lifestyle on the citizens of this city. In our backyards. This commercial business do not fit in our backyards in a senior citizen, community, and neighborhood. Our community was compared to Serenby community that's been here for a long time. And yearly salary also. That was said at the last meeting. A hundred and twenty thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. That was said. I wish Social Security would give us that amount of money. I just wish we could get it. This is what Serenby wonderful community have built and want to live in for their homes and their family that they worked for and paid for. A school that they built to protect their little ones. We are retired senior citizens, community that should not be compared to other communities because we do not have that type of salary or homes that they have. Our public schools. Do not party or sell alcohol to the children the way a commercial business will be selling to their guests. A public school ought to educate all our children and is free. The children comes first. This business do not fit in our community. We was compared to a church. I don't know and could not find any church that a person wanting to know God and the love of Jesus having to pay. By alcohol or selling. This business do not fit in the community. In our backyards, hundred of different guests, halls, loud music, different, all types of music, all the time, commercial building. Constructed in our backyards for our lives to be turned upside down. In our home, no peace or safety. No, this is not what we asked for or want for our community. This business do not fit in our neighbor's backyard. We already have new homes that's already being built in our area off of Petersburg Road. I plead with you all. Please, please say no to this special use permit. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Gloria Edwards.
Good evening. Gloria Edwards, I'll use my certificate as a, if you guys don't mind, I cherish it. It's beautiful, if you don't mind, as my bookmark. Okay, Gloria Edwards, seven, four, one, five Cascade and Calmetta Highway. I would like to express my final thoughts and my opposition to the special use. Request for twenty-eight point seven acres at thirty-seven, thirty-five Wikisamia Road to allow a country inn in a RL district. I stand in opposition with my fellow neighbors who have given me proxy to speak on their behalf. Over the course of this application, we have expressed many concerns, which I stated in my February letter to council, public hearing and planning meeting. And the community meeting hosted by the applicants. Additionally, I submitted to the city planning committee. A three-page petition signed by surrounding residents opposed to this country inn and event center. Which is a very large number of residents in opposition of this request. In the planning commissioner meeting I attended, I saw that consideration was given to some of those concerns, a total of over twenty-five stipulations and conditions. But in my opinion, the one concern staff and commission did not adequately address with whether or not this application was applicable for the zoning. It is not. Staff has said it's compatible and mentioned to other similar use that exist in RL area, including Serenby Inn. How, uh, Cherry Holland Farm. I disagree that this application is similar to those in any shape, form, or fashion. Serenby is zoned before our city was formed, and while it may be in a RL district, it is part of Serenby Hamlet. Cherry Hollow Farm surrounded by over three hundred acres of undeveloped land. But here in my, here's my main point. While the zoning lists several use, use permits that are potentially compatible. More of those are not compatible to our city's comprehensive plan and its vision for our city to keep it rural. The comprehensive plan states our future development will take place only in dense, mixed-use villages and smaller hamlets. The remainder of our city will be deliberately and permanently rural. A land outside of the village and hamlets will be in agricultural. Conservation or very low residential use. Zoning states the RL district is intended. Primarily low-density agriculture or single-family residence. This district designed to stabilize and protect. The rural agricultural and residential character of our city to encourage single-family use on a large lot. I understand the staff plan and city has been asked to review these discrepancies and make adjustment to the zoning. As that re- review may be lifted. I ask you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Denise Crawford.
Hey, y'all are doing it there when y'all use the microphone, it's y'all. And use the back of the mic. Because we can't hear, and I'll turn the volume up so loud as well, you can see that. Thank y'all.
Testing, one, two, three. Denise Crawford, five, five, seven, five, Cochran Mill Road. Okay, I'm going to adjust this for a second. I'm a little.
Sorry to interrupt you. Let me get situated here.
Okay, I'll pause.
Okay, I know. I want to make sure you get all your time.
Are we ready Dana?
Alright, go ahead.
You tell me go.
Go ahead.
You tell me stop.
Three, go.
Alright, Danine Crawford, five five seven five Cockermill Road. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor, the council, the staff, and especially the volunteers. What a wonderful job that you do to help support our city in every way, fashion and form. Without you, a lot of the events that are occurring around our city would never happen. And having just a small little part tonight is not enough to say thank you. So I really appreciate all that you do, and so does everybody else in our city. So, you know, I always come with a little concerns, but I have, only have really one major concern, and that is. Is paving on Hutchinson Fair Road going to happen after Rico Road gets paved? That is what one citizen asked to my committee, and was that in the budget or not? And the other comment that was made by several citizens is that it's not a concern, but they have hope for our future. With this new council that is sitting before us tonight. They have hope that this new council will review zoning and hopefully create. Zoning to include commercial hubs and not just mixed-use hamlets, but possibly into the historical districts. So that we can maintain residential zoning. And not have the spot zoning that we keep seeing pop up around all the residential. You know, you have residential and then you have a commercial entity that's trying to encroach into that residential zoning. And also just to return the citizens' land rights back by reviewing one house for twenty acres. Possibly looking at a tier system or. Something different than one house for twenty acres for those of us that live out on lots of land, family land. But also to look at maintaining the residential zoning by. Looking at the special use permits that are being allowed in the residential zoning. Or the variances that are being allowed. So those are the, that's the hope that the city council will review. And look at the zoning that's in place right now. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. You have more?
Speaking about something else, so that's fine.
Chandler Moore.
Good evening. I am a representative for Justin Robinson, and I would like to express my deepest gratitude for what you guys have done here in Chattahoochee Hills. What you've done from the community to even the volunteers to today that was read. You can definitely tell that this is a city of a place of intention. And that is your motto, and I do understand that, and what you guys have done here is definitely commendable. I would like to go through a couple of points, just of our overall of what we've heard. That we have heard and we have understood what the city, what the community has said. Our still goal is, our intention is still that it's, it's going to be a quiet luxury retreat. We have no intention of. Doing the guns and things of that nature that has been heard and said by the community. It will continue to be a quiet luxury retreat. We've also created the buffers. And these buffers that we've created, we've honored the neighbors. Justin has gone through the neighbors next door to speak to them individually. They were okay with it. I understand everyone goes back and forth, but at the beginning, they definitely were okay with that, which is how we got the hamlet buffers. Our other intention is garden to table. We understand that there is a taste bud that isn't, that is unique here in the, in the industry and in the world that's needed. Justin does that very well. He's, he's not gonna say it, but he is, I'm very proud of him that he will be cooking at the Masters this year. Which is huge for him. And so to be able to have that, that's commendable for him for sure. So that idea of garden to table and being able to create that here, and to be able to plant that and be able to educate those. Who aren't aware of cooking or how to cook, that's what he plans on doing, and that is another idea of great, of a place of intention. We have addressed the community's concerns regarding noise control and yes, all the stipulations. I'm so grateful for Katie and those that, for the planning department, they've been able to. Open their doors to us to be able to sit and create those stipulations. And we, our goal is to be able to honor all of those, so we're grateful for that too. As far as the special use permit, we do, we have been able to follow with the definitions. Like I was saying in the last one, on page two of twenty-six, in your appendix A, Article seven uses. The country inn or farm stay means of lodging facility in which six to fifty rooms are providing for sleeping accommodations for transit guests. That's something that we're doing. The other one is on page three of twenty-six, event center, large means of commercial facility or assembly hall. Available for lease by private properties or special events such as weddings and holding more than fourteen days of events with a calendar year. That's also located in your special unit, your special permit. The last one is outdoor dining means and accessory area of seating on a portion, thank you. And so our whole goal is, we've done it, we've done countless and we've been able, and we thank you, and we ask that you vote, we ask for this, thank you.
Katrina Ford.
Katrina Ford, seventy-four twenty-five Petersburg Road. Good evening, mayor and city council. You've already read my numerous emails on the matter. I just wanted to share something that I haven't shared before. I wanted you to know that I did stop to consider the benefit of the applicant's proposal to the neighborhood. I said to myself, self? I'm already married, so I don't need a wedding venue or reception. I said, well, I already live in a quiet neighborhood, so I don't need to walk across my backyard. To one of the applicant's sixteen cabins for luxury and quiet. My family hasn't had any complaints about my cooking, so I won't need to join the public. And purchase tickets for the applicant's cooking classes. So where does that leave me? Property value increase maybe? I don't know. But I believe the applicant knows that's why his house is not on the concept plan. Living in proximity to eighteen commercial buildings. Is no fun for anyone. And these particular commercial buildings are of no convenience to the neighbors, my retired neighbors. In the neighborhood. I also want to just remind you, and I know you've seen it in my email, but two hundred fifty people. Leaving a celebration with alcohol, they do not leave quietly. And so my house is the house, my parcel will be right behind this celebration. Of love that will occur every Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday evening. My house is also near the commercial kitchen. Where thirty-five classes, possibly four classes a day, one hundred forty people. Will learn to cook from Mr. Robinson. I'm asking the city council to consider the residents. Who have lived on Petersburg Road much longer than I have. And know that they, well, you know what, I don't know if I want to speak for them, so I'm gonna speak for me. Know that I don't want my grandchildren to have to listen to celebrations. All day, well, excuse me, Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday throughout the week. I'm gonna end there, I had something.
Sharon Beener.
Good evening, my name is Sharon Beener. I live at eighty-five fifty Wilkerson Mill Road. I wasn't going to speak because everyone has already covered all of the concerns that I had. Until I heard the young lady, the last person that spoke. And I think the main thing that I want to share to the council as well as the city planning office. I know it's water under the bridge, but when I look at the, the plat for this property that's being considered for this country inn. It's so weird, the way that they have the two driveways and it's coming behind other people's property. I just think that that is probably something that shouldn't have never been allowed or considered for a project like this. If it was going to be a single residence, fine. But to even consider putting something for commercial use behind someone's back door, I just think is. It's not a kind thing to do. I mean, and then it sets a terrible precedence. Once you do this, then how will you deny somebody else? The right to do a similar type thing in the community. You know, so I, I'm asking you to vote no for it. I think that it would be negligent to do it for so many different reasons. I think that the city planning office should have never even recommended approval for it. They were in attendance for two hearings where most of all the people that were in attendance. Were against it. So I, I was trying to think, what are they thinking? I think that as a community, we want to know more and understand what is the role, under what circumstances? Would the city planning office not send something forward to be approved? There was, there was no good reason to send it forward for approval. So I think that the council needs to at least. Communicate to citizens, you know, what the standard is, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Jordana Arias. Legislative Policy Analyst for Fulton County Government, Department of External Affairs. And I'm here to introduce myself. In my role, I support the public policy priorities of Fulton County. I also analyze legislation and provide policy recommendations to the board commissioners of Fulton County. And so I'm actually, I'm also the new liaison person for all local and municipal affairs. So I'm actually going around all the fifteen cities, introducing myself, connecting with the mayor. And with elected officials to see, to learn more about the issues and concerns. For the cities and to see how to explore potential collaboration opportunities for between Fulton County and, and the cities. So just wanted to say hello, and I also wanted to greet state rep, Mendesha Thomas that is here. It's good to see you again. So just want to introduce myself, I'll be coming to be, I, I will be in contact with you guys and let you know about updates with the county. And look forward to working with, with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Representative Mendesha Thomas.
Alright, so thank you for your public comments. I, I did want to point out really quickly, and I was gonna use this moment to point it out, we have a couple of. Folks in the room that I would like to introduce, C.T. Brown, if you wouldn't mind standing up. Mr. Brown is running for sheriff in Fulton County. We don't allow people to campaign during our council meetings, so they can't get up and campaign for you. But again, good to know who they are, and they're here if you want to talk to them after the meeting. And Mendesha, if you would stand up, please. Mendesha's been our representative in Georgia District sixty-five for several years now, has done. Really great work for us and is in the process of running for the US six congressional district. And again, she's here and I'm sure would love to talk to you after the meeting. And I want to also thank the representative from Fulton County, because we do a lot of good work with Fulton County, and I'm glad that they're sending people down to see how we're doing. Next up are our staff reports, and we will start with a financial update from the city manager.
Good evening, mayor, council, esteemed staff. Beautiful people of Chattahoochee Hills. I wish it was April first, so that was my impression of Greg, I mean, Darrell Winless, so I can do my impression of Greg Brett, Chief Brett. He's unable to be here tonight. He's not, he's not gonna do his report, but his report is in your packets, also on the website for your review. But he would want me to tell you, and the mayor might do it later on to under comments about some inclement weather coming in tonight, so. That's my best Greg Brett impersonation, but it is gonna be significant tonight between nine and two AM, nine and four AM, and there are some thunderstorms. Lightning, strong winds, those kind of things, so everybody, you know, be weather aware, as Chief Brett would say. But enough about that, it is, it is almost spring, it's April. I'm glad it's finally April, because I mean, this one day closer to warmer weather, even though we got some cold, cold weather coming in. But for financial purposes, you know, I'm looking at it from, we're getting closer to the end of the fiscal year. We're sixty-six percent through the budget year, but it also is that my time of year, it's always my time, but even more so this time of year. Start looking closer at our fund balance and where we're at and how we're, the revenues are coming in and expenditures are going out and those kind of things. So revenues don't come in as, as quickly this time of year, except for like things like business licenses and, and special event revenue and permit revenue and those kind of things. But we start getting, you know, all our, our largest form of revenue taxes, revenue has already come in. The, the, the grant we get from the state's not here yet, but it'll be here, it always gets here, it's about a hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. We've, we've got stuff like our, our franchise taxes are almost all in, you'll see it's a hundred percent. I like to go down and highlight the areas that are not at sixty-six percent and ask myself, why are those things not at sixty-six percent yet? And one example is when you look at planning and development fees, it's, you know, it's at fifty-one percent, but yet land disturbance fees are seventy-one percent. That's because we kind of pulled out land disturbance fees, so we can look at those a little closer. So if you combine those two, we're really at sixty-four percent with those two, because those used to be combined, but that, that might stand out to you, so that's what I look for. I look out, look for things that might stand out to the council and into the public, and the other revenues are about where they should be. Looking at parking fines, I'm sorry, parking fees and fines, we're at sixty, seventy-one percent of parking fees. So Parks Commission's here listening to that, and parking fines is up too as well. Fines and forfeitures, that just depends on court, we got court coming up, so different courts, the fines, and we got our, our solicitors here, so. We won't talk about how your role is with fines, you, you just work on our behalf. In case y'all didn't know, our city attorney here is also our solicitor, because our city attorney is overseas. Iceland, so that is overseas, but such, yeah. Our chief Brett. The last page, I have to say it's last page, not really a number, are the February financials, general fund expenditures. Which is kind of the most important page for me. Yes, the revenues are critical and important, but I like looking at the. At the, the overall expenditures when it comes to the department. These are at department level, it's not broken down into details, just a summary level. And so you might see something that's really high, like the administrative and finance department, it's eighty-seven percent. Well, that's because our audit was a lot more expensive than we budgeted for, so we just, we're making, we made a correction to that. And next year, we actually, I think I told you at the last council meeting, we contacted our auditors and negotiated with them and say, look, we're gonna go out for RFP. If you don't get a little bit more competitive with the rates, this is too much, and they're gonna reduce our rates for our audit, so that's kind of what we do in that area. Public Works, I bring this up for, because you know, Darrell's always very cognizant and watchful and mindful of his budget. But what you also have to see in Public Works, police and fire, when I first do this report, when it comes out, it has. All the capital in there, so I pull that out, and at the very bottom, you'll see that color-coded chart. So that way, that's, that's a good thing for me, but does something for you too. It doesn't overinflate their budget, it makes it look like they're over-budget. If I left it in there, it would, you say, oh my goodness, Public Works is over-budget. Well, you look down, you'll see, well, part of those. Part of the numbers that I first see that come into the financials when I, when I run a report. Those, all the things in the capital also come under those departments. I pull those out, so that way you can see where they're really at from an operations standpoint. Because we don't have a separate capital fund. I keep a capital fund because it's important for me to track, but it's not in our financial system that way. So you'll see some cars that were purchased, Public Works Capital and such, so Public Works, a lot of that in their department is, is roadwork. And it's not, it's gravel roadwork, not like paving and such, like we're doing with T-Spot. So there's a question earlier from a citizen about T- a citizen about T-Spot, and this could be a good opportunity. I know we don't answer those questions necessarily, but it does come under financials. So Hudson Ferry Road and Rico Road are going to be paved. They're two separate companies, two separate awards. But Hudson's and Ferry Road is going to be done first as well as the other roads. They're, they're going to be micro-surfaced, micro-surfaced. And Rico Road is going to be, it's a full depth reclamation. So that's going to be a different, that's a different company. That's Piedmont paving company. So A S Asphalt Paving Systems, A P S is doing all the other roads and then Piedmont's doing Rico. So the timing should be different because we don't want to impact traffic patterns. But that's kind of where we are with that. I'll be happy answering any other questions about, or any questions about finance.
Just so people understand, what is the difference, what is micro-surfacing for Hudson Ferry, just so people know?
Yes. Well, micro-surfacing is, you go through and you basically, you're just, in fact, the mayor probably explained it better than I can, but you go through these roads and you're, you're basically topping it, but you're doing some, some infill, if you will, to seal the road. So that way it lasts a little bit longer. And so you, you're going to surface the road, but before you actually put the top on it, you're, you're kind of sealing it so that way it preserves and doesn't let water leak in and that kind of stuff. So full depth reclamation on Rico, that's when you go through and you start seeing the road start tearing apart and the alligator look and potholes and the shoulders breaking off. They have to come through and they mill it. That's what they've just done on Campbellton Red One. I say they, G dot, Georgia Department of Transportation, which they go and they do basically not on the whole road, but in certain sections. But we're going to do all of Rico Road, four miles, full depth reclamation. So that's a big project. But good question. Be happy to answer any other questions or be Chief Brett some more.
I'm going to be Chief Brett tonight.
You're going to be Chief Brett?
Yeah.
Do your hand motions.
No. Not going to play act Chief Brett, but I am going to talk about a couple of the things that are in his report. Just kind of for the good of people that don't have them in front of them or on the Zoom thing. Two things that we've been getting a lot of questions about recently, well, one thing we've been getting a lot of questions about, one is just something, it's a PSA. A lot of people have been noticing the smoke in the neighborhood, different times, you know, it'll be smoky for a couple of days. This is the time of the year that they do the controlled burns in the forestry land throughout the city. It's one of those things. It's, it's kind of uncomfortable when you have the smoke, you know, your eyes are itching and all that. But it is also the thing that prevents us from having big forest fires. They go through on a regular basis every few years and kind of burn out the understory and clutter. And that way you don't have fuel there to make forest fires happen. And this is the time of year that they do it, you know, when the ground's wet and all of that. So again, apologies for that smoke. It's not really something we have any control over, but we do know that it's happening because every now and then it gets a little out of hand and our fire department has to go save them from themselves. The other thing is just a PSA. We had a recent fire in the community that luckily was caught in time. Somebody had taken a heating pad and put it under the cushion of a chair to warm their butt when they were cold. And the problem with that is that those heating pads are not meant to be contained like that. And it actually got much hotter than it was supposed to and started the cushion of that chair that they were sitting on, on fire after they weren't sitting there. And luckily they noticed before the fire got out of control, but this is just one of those PSAs. Don't do that. If you're using a heating pad, it's meant to be between you and, and something and you turn it off when you're not with it. Don't ever put it inside of something or under something, just a PSA. And I'm sure Greg would have done a much better job of explaining that and he would have probably had some hand motions involved, but we miss him today and I didn't want to leave his, his stuff totally unmentioned. Next up is a police department report. We'll chief to go.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, citizens. You have before you the police department report. One of the things that I focus on every, every month is our calls and our calls are continuing to, to go up. Again, I, I, I know we, we stress this all the time, but again, please, please, citizens, call nine one one, especially on the weekend. There were some posts on the Facebook over the weekend that someone was trying to reach the police department and were a little upset that nobody answered the phone at, on Saturday. We're not here in the building. We're not in the building on the weekends. So please call nine one one. Tell them you're in Chattahoochee Hills. Ask for a Chattahoochee Hills officer. Our Criminal Investigations Division has been very busy over the last few weeks. I haven't really reported it because we've been doing some, I don't want to say secret stuff, but kind of secret stuff. My investigator has discovered a theft ring that was going on and we finally broke it up. So we made six, six warrants have been issued for people that were going around stealing things from tractor trailers to side by sides conducting burglaries. We've recovered over two hundred thousand dollars in stolen items over the last six weeks, which led to six felony arrests. So we put those guys in jail and hopefully the thefts will go back down. But that's why I haven't really mentioned it over the last couple of weeks, because he's been busy running back and forth, getting warrants signed, and we have a whole murder tree board connecting everybody to, have you ever seen those movies, you know, where they have a murder board? Yeah, let me explain that. We don't have a bunch of murders going on. Yeah, we just have, it's called the murder board. If you ever watch Law and Order, they have the, you know, the murder board. We have one of those, but it's for our theft ring. And so, yeah, let me, let me clarify that. We don't have a bunch of murders going on. Yeah, I left murders out. So anyway, but no, my, my detective and my lieutenant have been working long hours identifying these individuals and, and finally broke it up. And like I said, they made six felony arrests over the past few weeks and have returned of, and recovered a lot of stolen equipment. So very proud of them. But, yeah, thank you. Other than that, that's all I have. Any questions? Thank you.
So we're, we're now to the audience participation part of the meeting. This is the part where I ask everybody a question, kind of call and response. If we need anything from the police department in Chattahoochee Hills, who do we call? What number do we call? Doesn't matter what it is. You're never bothering anybody. Please, nine one one. It's the only way. Be sure you get them. Again, dogs lose whatever, like whatever it is, you're not offending anybody. You're not bothering anybody. Next up is Public Works with Director David Winland. Darrell, what was that? Darrell? I don't know that guy.
Who was that masked man? Good evening, Mayor, Council and the beautiful residents of Chattahoochee Hill. See, that's how you do it right there. You feel the love. You see, you feel the love and the love is in the There you go, my lord. All right, let's, you know, lifetime mayor Ryu that says, you know, we get up here and cut up and joke. I take my job very seriously. Everybody, pretty much everybody here knows how serious I am. I take this personal. Robbie says, don't take it personal. How, how can I not? It's my department. I'm responsible for everything that happens. And I was talking to a few people the other day about our director's responsibility. People don't realize the responsibility. We have a whole city looking at me to make sure I make the right decisions every day to what's going to benefit the city. I have a mayor and council that's doing the same thing. And then I have my boss, which is city manager, the same thing. Then I have other department heads are looking at me the same way. It's a lot of pressure on the director and that's, that's good, though. So I do take it personal. When you say the roads ain't scraped, can't, can't look at nobody else. It's personal. It's me. So, but we do cut up and joke. And, and, but I like that. That's just my personality. If you can't have fun with what you're doing, if you can't enjoy what you're doing, you shouldn't be doing it. I always say find another job if you ain't happy doing it. And I'm happy doing what I do. I love what I do. And I enjoy every day coming here. Two things. Gravel, gravel roads continue to be scraped. Of course, you know, I've, I've been asked several times about a schedule. It is impossible. You cannot, you got too many factors. You got one crew. You got too many other things that come up that they do. For example, if y'all remember the last council meeting we had, the sewers backed up. Steve come running here and said, man, your bathrooms are backing up. Well, the next morning for two solid days, me and my grading crews dug up and we didn't have, I've been here years. I had no clue where it was at. So it took us hours to locate and find where it is. So we had to redo all that. It's two days, but it was done. Nothing, we had court on Thursday. Nothing was interfered. Everyday operation continued to go. That's why, and plus the weather. Some roads are used more than others. Some get scraped through three or four times a year. Some only get scraped once a year. It's impossible. I, I just say I cannot, as in me, give you a schedule. And because I'm setting myself up for, for, for failure. Because soon as somebody say, well, you said you was going to be at my road this month and I'm two months away. I just, I just can't. I don't know anybody that can. I've talked to other counties and cities and see how they do it, if they're able. There's a one county I know that they give somewhat of a schedule, but they have three motor graders, three motor grader droppers and two motor graders on side if they're broke down. So you pretty much can kind of do stuff with good weather. So that's where we are with the gravel roads. You know, we are still siding. I mean, if you look down here, it shows, it shows the areas we're siding on. Right now, what we're going to do is we're going to try to hit the biggest spots, not complete road, because it's starting to get springtime. What we're going to do is we're going to hit the bigger spots and then our Bushall is going to start cutting, one crew going to be cutting. But the sidearm is going to continue to cut until the Bushall crew gets, start getting behind. Then I'll put two crews and we get caught up right back to the normal operation on sidearm. If you look in your packets I gave you, it's funny that I brought this up because Richie called me out a while ago and, and I got a picture set on Creel Road. Was it Creel or Steed? Steed Road. Or somebody decided to throw a, look like a hot tub. A hot tub on, on the right way. So I give you this picture just so that way you know. This picture right here, this one right here, that's a nine yard trash container. This is filled completely. You can't close the lid. Every Tuesday is changed out. So on Tuesday, we got trash sitting around it. So you know, nine yards, over nine yards get picked up every week in our city. Yes, she's tra, in this trash. And, and I have three major roads that we pick up four to one on every other road in the city. If you want to know what they are, you can see me afterwards. I don't want to call anybody's road out. I mean, it is what it is. But there's three roads that we pick up continuously. I can go down it. We can pick it up, come back next day, write back down the same way. And it is what it is. I mean, and then, and this, this right here, this is a thirty yard roll off. Now this is, that's right here is just two weeks of trash in our city. So you take a twenty yard and a nine yard. This is what you're getting in our city. So residents say, well, they haven't picked up my road in a month or two months. I got proof right here. I can show you this picture. I can show you a change every council. I've been wanting to do this for a while. We, it just hadn't happened, but just wanted you to know what you're seeing. If we didn't do this, you can imagine what your city would look like. We'd look like our neighbor city over there. Also, somebody took my thunder a while ago about ball season. Ball season started off with a bash and a bang and a couple of home runs Saturday. Baby Healy, which is resident in our city, that left and came back. He's one responsible for, I'm going to give him the credit because he's the one goes out there and he manicures that field every week. And that field absolutely, if you can show that to an opening bay, you can see what our park looks like. That's our park. It's a beautiful park. And it was a success. That's all I have for mine. If y'all have any questions for me. Alrighty.
It's hard to follow. And speaking of that, Katie, do you have anything from the media development department?
And it'll be quick. Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of things. I passed out our report for this month. So you should have that in front of you. You'll notice there is a slight uptick in permits that were issued March of twenty twenty-three. Thirteen, we had fourteen in total for this past month. There was an increase of COs from twelve last year to twenty and an astounding two hundred and forty-nine inspections conducted in March as opposed to a hundred and eighty-one last year. I believe we have a total of six new houses from this past March as opposed to one in twenty twenty-three, March of twenty twenty-three. And this is very likely due to the estates of Cedar Grove. They're currently getting infilled over there. The only other thing I have is there will be no planning commission meeting this month due to, well, we don't have anything. So but other than that, if you have any questions for me, I'm here.
Sounds good. Thanks, Katie. All right. We don't have any public hearings tonight. We do have a couple of items of unfinished business. First is twenty-three dash oh four four. Oh, I'm sorry. You're not on my, oh my gosh. I need to add you to my template. Sorry. Our economic development department of one.
Yes, well, this is my first time actually coming up for this part of the program. So thank you, or recognize the mayor, city council residents, and absolutely the volunteers that make the city so special. You guys have been such a value to me and an inspiration in a lot of the work that I do. Just kind of recap, I'm two days shy of four months with the city of Chattahoochee Hills. And it feels like it's been about eight months worth of work.
That's good.
We, 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 you know, when I speak, when I speak about economic development or planning, we tend to have a speaking in the plural. Because when I say we accomplish this or we've done this, it's not just me. It's a lot of the volunteers. It's a lot of other citizens and interest groups and other organizations and jurisdictions that help us do our work. Some, some of the programs we've accomplished in the last four months alone, written a grant for arts, wrote a grant for the police department, worked on programming the city to move our LAP certification, our local, locally administered project certification with G dot so we can expend federal funds or even pursue federal funds. It's been a real long process. Working with the Parks Commission and also several other interest groups with the city with respect to trails programs, both the Riverlands Trail Program, which is a regional program, as well as the city's internal Chat Hills Network Trail Network Program as well. Also down to the RTP Original Trails Program Grant that I'm working on with the categorical exclusion for environmental impacts, which is something that we're working with the, the Parks Commission currently. Number of other projects I will touch upon later, but one thing we would like to pursue later this year is to be inducted into the Georgia Economic Place Making Collaborative. That is a network through the Georgia Cities Foundation where they provide technical support to the city to accomplish our local objectives. And one thing I, I've been thinking about this for four months now as far as what we could do to benefit from that state program. And back in twenty twenty, the Georgia Department of Economic Development did a, a tourism assessment for the city with a report. They no longer provide that service to any other jurisdictions in the state. So what we got out of that was a great report or a framework plan for how to approach economic development tourism in the city. Many of the recommendations that they advanced have already been recognized or realized by the city, such as the branding effort by the C V, the C V B and the creation of the, the DMO at the C V B were both two large priorities in that plan. Other things are working around ecotourism, such as utilizing the river for economic tourism. We've already got the, the fishing touches on the boat ramps and the facilities that go with the Riverlands Park and the, the park up at Campbellton. So we're fulfilling a lot of these, these priorities. What I want to do with the Economic Place Making Collaborative is to go and take what we had not done in sort of this sort of ideal, you know, plan and come up with a very strong strategic vision that gives us the limitation steps and helps us really recognize our potential. So I'll be talking a little bit about that. um, I'll be talking a little bit about that in a minute with respect to the Georgia Cities uh, Georgia Cities was week. Yeah, Georgia Cities Week. It's uh, so, so work that we're doing there with that. So uh, that's all I have to present currently, but uh, you guys are definitely keeping me very, very, very busy.
Yeah, I know, I know you're, you're, you're now fully engaged because today was the first time I got an email from you saying, yeah, I'll add that to the list. I, I'm sending positive emails. So, yeah, sorry. Thanks again, Chris.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, sorry about that. Now, moving on to unfinished business. Uh, we have twenty-three dash oh four four, which is the rezoning of the Merrill property on uh, South Fulton Parkway. Uh, they've asked for us to defer that. We've had some recent meetings with them, uh, really productive meetings uh, with council around some of the uh, issues and concerns that we've been addressing and have seen some good movement on addressing those. So um that's all. Just going to wait until we, we get to the answers that we want. Uh, the next one is twenty-four dash oh oh six, which is an ordinance to approve a special use permit for.
We need to make a motion. We did not do that. We did not defer that uh, gender approval. So if we can get a motion.
Can I get a motion in a second, please, to defer twenty-three dash oh four four?
And, and I'm gonna play Rick here. Are we deferring it to the next meeting?
We are going to defer it to the next meeting. Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion to defer item two, three, zero, four, four to the next meeting.
Second. We have a motion in the second. All those in favor deferring, please say aye. Uh, so that stands for, and thank you Dana. Uh, you take a moment to call Dana out as our amazing city clerk who make sure that all these details work properly because I sometimes go zooming by details. Uh, next is twenty-four dash oh six, which is an ordinance to approve a special use permit for a country in in the RL District. Um, at eighty-seven thirty-five Wilkerson Mill. Katie, you wanna give us a quick description of that?
Yes, um, just, we've heard about this a couple of times, but the applicant, Justin Robinson, has applied for a special use permit for his twenty-eight acres on Wilkerson Mill Road. Uh, this proposal is to allow a country in in the RL District. Essentially, uh, he'll be operating uh, sixteen, eight hundred square foot cabins as well as a dining venue and a commercial kitchen. Um, trying to think what else. In addition to hosting guests at the country inn, the applicant intends to host weddings in his indoor dining venue. And the kitchen and dining venue will be accessory uses to the country inn and will be used for guests of the estate.
Okay, we've, we've all had a, a great deal of conversation around this. I, I wanted to do something though, because in those conversations and any conversations that have with the community, uh, I think there's sometimes a lack of a clarity around how special use permits work and what they're for. And I just wanted to add a little bit of context so that people know as we're, as we're doing this, uh, how it works. Uh, there are two kinds of permits that cities give. One of them are permits for things like your houses and whatnot, right? If you have a house on your lot, as long as you follow the rules, you can get a permit to do it. Special use permits are a little bit different. Um, they're places where there are these things that might be possible in places in the city where they make sense. But the council has really broad discretion on whether the particular thing, in the particular way it's being described, makes sense in the particular place that somebody is wanting to do it. Um, and there's a lot of different standards that the council can look at with that. I mean, part of it is just general consistency with the zoning and the comp plan. But it's also more specifically about things like the impact of the land use on surrounding properties. Uh, you know, in the same zoning district or this things of compatible size or they compatible feel. Uh, the adequacy of things like ingress and egress and the impact that that would have on surrounding neighbors. Um, and in particular, things like just the adverse impacts, period. Noise, odor, dust, whatever that kind of thing, volume of traffic, uh, environmental impacts. And, and you know, if you think about that in context, every lot is so different and the physical charac- characteristics of every lot are so different. Size of lot. You know, whether there's a stream running through it, whether there's a pond, whether there are neighbors closer, whether they're far, big parcel, small parcel, all of that. And I know people say things like, you know, you have to be careful because if you let one happen, you have to let them all happen. That's not the way this works. These things are looked at very specifically based on the specific details of a particular project and the particular impact on that parcel. There are no two parcels in the city that are alike, much less two projects that are alike. So again, you know, this is not a gimme. This is not something that people just come in and get to get. It's something that the council has to carefully consider those impacts, the impacts on the neighbors. And if it's appropriate, they might approve it or, you know, that's how that works. They have really broad discretion here. I just wanted to be sure that everybody recognized how this fits in. Uh, it's, it's not just a fait accompli. There's a conversation has to happen around it. And so with that, uh, I'm gonna ask if there are any motions on this one and we can talk about more specifically uh, after that.
Tom, I would like to make a motion that we deny this application.
Okay, is there, there's a motion on the table to deny the application? Is there a second for that?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Okay, so uh, we'll go ahead and discuss that. If anybody has anything that they'd like to say. Uh, any discussion that they'd like to have, why they think that, whatever, that's appropriate.
Well, for me, the um, safety of the community, the welfare of the people, um, the people have spoken. Um, this is a senior uh, area and at this time, um, you know, we don't, they don't want it.
And I would say, yes, I like the idea, but I do think that one thing that we did discuss at our little spring training and we had a zoning and we've got a lot of questions like this.
There you go. Alright, can y'all hear me now? Anyway, we don't really have commercial notes unless you, you're, you're in a place like Steve or something, you know, or you got another guy building a hamlet or something. And then that's something we're, uh, I'm pretty sure we're gonna talk through, you know, if you, you got a permit to stick something in a place where it can go instead of uh right dab in a residential area. And my oath is to the citizen. I have no oath to a developer, any, any, anything like that. I like the idea of it. But I will not allow somebody to put a construction zone in a citizen's backyard of that magnitude. That's unfair. That's not why we moved in the country. You wanna do that, do a hamlet, do a village, do something else. But uh, that's just, and that should surprise nobody. But that's, that's why I like the project, but I, I think the land, if, if it was a hundred acres, you're using fifteen acres in the middle. Nobody can say anything. There's a football field in between you, but that's not the case here. And that, that's, that's uh, gonna be a lot of traffic. And you know, when you got twenty-five different variances or whatever, or stipulations to me, um, it doesn't fit. If I gotta change it that much, oh my gosh, it doesn't fit. And uh, that's just where I'm at. Thank you.
Anybody else have any thoughts?
Uh, yeah, I would just say, um, I spent a lot of time looking at like the conditions as we've had a, a, a good bit of time to, to be back and forth with that and with the planning commission. And I know, um, however this turns out, I think I, I, we really did a nice job with trying to, to have, see how this, we could make this fit at the same time listening to the to the neighbors and the thanks to everybody for continuing to come out and share your thoughts because that, it, it's very helpful. Um, and um, I know several of us were able to go out and look at the property and see. So we did, it, it's nothing to take lightly when this is a, a something that someone really has an interest in doing on their property, but I also think that looking at how it fits and then the neighbors' concerns is um, as important.
Yes.
Um, I'll, I'll just say that I, I appreciate the level of due diligence done on all parts on this. And I think that may even have contributed to the zoning, the zoning commission's uh, decision, which then goes to the council and becomes the much, I, I think more wide ranging can uh, decision about what happens to the community and the level of community interaction around this has been, uh, I think the most I've seen so far in, in uh, several years on the zoning and now joining the council. So I've appreciated that level of thought and uh, and commitment to the ideas of the city that have gone into this.
I mean, I can't really say anything that hadn't been said before. There's been a lot of meetings with the planning commission, the city council meetings, and even the town hall. And I attended that as well and some other councilmen were there. It's been a lot of thought put into this. It's nothing that just casually make the decision. There's been a lot of thought. You listen a lot. A lot of letters were sent to us. And um, it's not this, we do not take this decision lightly.
Alright, so the, the motion before us is a motion to deny uh, twenty-four dash oh oh six. So when I call this, if you vote aye, you're voting to deny. You vote nay, you're voting to not deny, right? Just to be clear. So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of denying twenty-four dash oh oh six, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Alright, twenty-four dash oh six stands denied. Uh, next up is new business. We have a couple of items of new business, twenty-four dash oh two oh, which is an ordinance to adopt a local amendment of the plumbing code. Uh, this is a thing coming from the state of Georgia, Katie.
Yes, uh, it's a requirement uh, via DCA. Uh, local governments within the district, including Chattahoochee Hills, are required to adopt the local amendment to the plumbing code for water efficiency. Um, back in January, the city completed the first step, uh, first step of this requirement, uh, when it adopted the model findings resolution. And um, the city submitted that to DCA for a sixty day review. Since then, sixty days has passed and we are moving on to the next step. Uh, now the city needs to adopt the amendment using the ordinance based on the state's model adoption resolution. Uh, after the adoption, the city will submit a final copy of the amendment to DCA. And then we will be done. And this amendment will be added to the end of chapter eight, buildings and building regulations. We located under article four miscellaneous provisions, creating a new section, section eight seventy-four. Local amendments to plumbing code for water efficiency and staff recommends approval of this ordinance.
Alright. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-four dash oh two oh, which is the update in the plumbing code?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor of adopting twenty-four dash oh two oh, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, that carries unanimously. Next up is twenty-four dash oh two one, which is a resolution recognizing Georgia Cities Week, uh, and encouraging all citizens to support the celebration corresponding activities, which is something Chris has been talking about.
Yes, Georgia Cities Week, April twenty-first to the twenty-seventh. Uh, it's a statewide initiative to recognize the value and purpose of living in cities. Uh, I myself live in an unincorporated county and have no deference or preference from someone that lives on the other side of the county or the other side of the county that uh, really doesn't share a common interest. So living in a city has a lot of benefits with the, with respect to representation, with respect to public service delivery, with respect to the very interesting qualities that make every city a unique place to visit or to live. Uh, one of the things that we are doing in recognition of Georgia Cities Week is number one, through the action of the, of the city council's passing a resolution to support recognizing Georgia Cities Week in Chattahoochee Hills. Uh, secondly, we're gonna be setting up a, an exhibit out in the lobby, which is a community asset map, which is a layered map of different uh, different things that make Chattahoochee Hills a very special place. Uh, some of those are gonna include the city's historic resources. Uh, with the combination of the information from the comprehensive plan and using the tax assessors, uh, year built data built into the tax digest, we were able to identify properties of what would seem uh, historic character in the community. And there are roughly forty-two homes or structures that we identify as being historically notable. That doesn't mean that we're going to be pursuing a historic designation for those properties, but just something in the evolution of the city in time as it's evolved from pre uh, you know, pre-civil war through reconstruction through the nineteen hundreds industrial era. And the evolution of what we see today from a city that's, you know, half the size of inside the perimeter highway, but has only thirty-five hundred people in it. I mean, it's really quite special. And so other, other maps that will be included are going to be uh, points of interest. So when we think about Chattahoochee Hills, outside of Chattahoochee Hills, uh, we say, hmm, yeah, Serb is nice. And hmm, you know, I really like Hockham Mill Park. And that's about all I know. Um, I've come up with roughly twenty-five points of interest in the community that are either institutions like art or farming institutions or their cultural centers or their landmarks or things like that, that really kind of compile onto how we tell the story and how we develop uh, economic development and tourism strategy for the city. We want people to be able to say, hey, you know what? We can go on that really nifty um, historic preservation tour. It's a historic preservation driving tour that looks at, you know, civil war and post-civil war era homes or homesteads. We can go to those really great towns, uh, those unique crossroads communities like, like uh, like Hackaway Corner slash Friendship and uh, go, uh, was it Goodyear? Goods, okay. Um, you know, some real, and then Rico, if you look at a map of the development pattern in the city, Rico is actually a very important crossroad. Uh, it's really not much to look at today, but great plans for the future. Uh, other things that we'll be looking into are going to be the transportation alternates, as I call them, which is a combination of the Riverlands Trails, the Itchigal Trail System. Uh, it's going to be the, the uh, not, not the bypass, the, the.
The scenic byway.
The scenic byway. It's a, that's a hard term for me to get my head around. The scenic byway, it looks at uh, uh, areas for uh, idle sports. It looks for areas for equestrian activity. So all of these multimodal development nodes from hiking to biking to walking and uh, to paddling. I mean, we will identify and recognize all these nodes as an asset to the community. The last uh, storyboard I'm working on tomorrow will be um, identifying all of the public art that is located throughout the community. Uh, you guys have done a really exceptional job of that and uh, that deserves to be recognized and celebrated. And so the um, storyboards are also in support of our application later this year for the Georgia Economic Place Make Collaborative. So thank you for recognizing the uh, Georgia Cities Week and definitely want to thank and definitely recognize and value all the volunteers that work within the city of Chat Hills.
This, this city is an important thing. You think about it, you know, twenty years from now, we will be the only place within twenty miles of here that has any rural, anything left. We'll still have farms. We'll still have forests. Uh, you look at the development patterns around us and it's all the way around us now. Every property, every piece that is big enough is turning into a subdivision all the way around us. And it is literally all the way around us. We're the only place. We don't have warehouses. We don't have all that stuff. And twenty years from now, fifty years from now, a hundred years from now, this place will be different. And that's because we became a city. Um, so anyway, uh, can I get a motion in a second to adopt twenty-four dash oh two one, please?
Make a motion to adopt twenty-four dash oh two one.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussions? Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That stands uh, adopted unanimously. We'll know that Chris is really, really a part of the city when he knows that it's Rico. Uh, next up is twenty-four dash oh two two, which is approval of the twenty-twenty-four Parks Commission meeting schedule. And much though I'd like to talk about when they should be meeting, I think that they probably got that well in hand. So can I get a motion in a second to adopt that, please?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of adopting the schedule that they want, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay?
Volunteers, you can't push them around.
That's unanimous. Uh, before we go to mayor and council comments, I, I always like to point out when we've got kids in the room, I always think it's absolutely cool when kids come to council meetings and sit the whole time. And usually it's like a four-year-old or a seven-year-old that's sitting here quietly, you know, watching the meeting and like mom and dad flicking to keep quiet. This little thing back here has been quiet this entire meeting. And she's soaking it in, right? She's gonna be on council in, I don't know, thirty years. So it's, it's the sweetest thing. And I also think this is the first time I've ever had a dog sit through this meeting absolutely quietly, the entire meeting. You thought you were gonna get away with me calling you out. There you are. Beautiful little pup back there quietly absorbing the meeting. So just had to call that out. Uh, council and mayor comments, we will start at our left tonight. Rodney, what you got?
What a special night. I mean, it's overwhelming. See the amount of volunteers. This community involvement, the citizens' involvement, and that just kind of warms your heart. And Darryl kind of followed up with that. He loves working for the city. I mean, we have a great staff sitting before us. And when Darryl said that, I wrote it down to remember that. Um, I love that about our city. And, you know, we've been busy since the last meeting. We had a two-day retreat and a one-day retreat where we went to, um, East Point. And sat with the directors and listened to some of their needs, some, you know, feature very long-term needs. And some very short-term leads, needs. And that's just a time for them to get to talk to us. We discussed. You know, the police, the fire, the public works, and even some of the zoning needs that we have for our city. Uh, and over the last month, I went on a ride along with one of our police officers. And, um, I've done that in the past and it's just a reminder. I think I knew the city pretty well. But they ride those roads every single day and they notice things. They're aware. They're not just, we were riding down this obscure road. Oh, they just cut some trees down. And I looked, I'm like, how do you know that? It looks like it was done yesterday. Yeah, I ride these roads every day. I can, I notice things. And that just made me feel good. That's kudos. And I love riding along with police officers. They do a great job. District five is having a town hall meeting, April eighteenth at six P M at the Sardis Church Pavilion. They're in the ball field. Uh, there's notification on the website that Dana put on there. Thank you, Dana. And it's so true. Tom mentioned this earlier. The city limits of Chattahoochee Hills are only going to grow more and more deep, and they're only going to grow to differentiate our city even more. It is so evident on certain roads. And, you know, I hope that we fight to keep it that way. We want it different. And one more thing, Katie. It's our last city council meeting with you. So we want to say thank you and wish you well as you get upgraded to a few minutes drive from the beach.
Yeah.
On the Georgia coast. Well, thank you for all your help and service.
Yeah, you're Scott.
Um. I, I, I wanted to, uh, mention that we, uh, as a city council and the zoning board met, uh, last Friday and had a, I think, a very productive meeting around, uh, uh, tightening up the standards for entry into, into the, the, uh, city. Agreeing on, I think, a number of points that will help contribute to the long-term stability and predictability and viability of the city. So I found that meeting very encouraging. And thank you so much for the, the ver- very, uh, for, for the people who ran the meeting and also the, uh, good work of the zoning board. Uh, and then I, and I wanted to, uh, acknowledge the volunteers. What a list. What is? I don't know why, but think of what we do as volunteer work. But then I think there's, there's so many volunteers and so many names. And the same name appearing in different places. Uh, it's just amazing to me when you really hear those lists spool down the screen. And then, uh, the, uh, I came in wanting to mention, uh, rural libraries as a, as a lover of books myself. And, uh, uh, guilty of, uh, keeping many library books longer than I should, of the many libraries that I use. Uh, libraries are such a vital thing in a community and can be such a center of interest and meeting for people of so many ages and interests and so on. And, you know, I like hearing about the library from the neighbor. There are volunteers and I just feel so pleased at how, uh, how vital. You know, people sometimes think of libraries as these dusty places, but it's all in such a great resource. And it's nice that it's been made such a social resource in our city. So thanks very much.
Thanks, Camille.
Yep. So ditto on our meeting, on our retreat with planning and, um, but I just wanted to thank, thank the mayor, actually, because pulling in folks that were here in the beginning, right, that worked with the, uh, original comp plan and then, um, for someone like me that did not live here during that time, it gives me a great history on sort of what, what a majority of, of the city wanted back then, right? So that we can reflect on that. And it, it gave me time to, to stop and think about it. And, you know, I, I get to meet people. I mean, even now Rodney was here during those meetings and we saw pictures. So you can kind of see who those folks are and actually take time to listen. Um, even as we cross paths now, it makes a huge difference. So always chirping my ear about any of that. I love to hear about it. Um, so the last thing, yeah, so April thirteenth, um, I see Maria out there. She made some wonderful signs. We'll see around the city for the movie night. Uh, Maria Hansen, another super volunteer. Thank you. Um, those are up. So, uh, remember it's seven P M on April thirteenth. This is Saturday. No rain, hopefully. Uh, Chief Brett will let us know when we get a couple of days before. Um, and the art farm from Serenby will be, they, they support the arts, um, the environment and music. And they will have some music out there for the kids. So when folks get there, there will be a program around, uh, music. So they've add, we've added that to the agenda for the evening. Thank you.
Richie?
Um. Yeah, to, to Brickworks, I really appreciate the explanation that you gave, because I don't think a lot of people understand how much you guys actually do. Ms. Hall's my neighbor and I've talked to her a lot. And, um, you know, I've known over the years, a lot of things that you guys do. And I'm just really glad that you shared that and have that place running like a good well machine. So what? Okay. Well, we do what we can, but no, it's amazing how many people you guys feed. I've rode by in the afternoon and seen when y'all are doing that and goes on for hours. And, uh, that's good. Um, and, 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 you know, everybody touched on the volunteers. We know that, that the hearts in this community, uh, really can't be measured no matter what it is. Folks come out, those probably fix it. That's what, that's what country folks do. We survive, we figure it out. Um, Kevin, thank you. I have seen a lot more patrols. I appreciate the much more detailed sheet. Um, I just like to know what's around me. That's all. I'm a hunter. That's good information. Thank you. Um, and, um, also, um, you know, like Mr. Lightsey said, we did have a couple really good meetings. And I think one thing we, we're going to have to do is we're going to have to figure out where we're going to put commercial, some cases and where residential is, maybe create something. Because it doesn't matter. You're going to have this pop up every time. We had it pop up with a couple other things. And, um, I just know everybody has different opinions on different things, but, uh, it's real simple to me. I just read my oath. That tells me who I represent, who I don't. But yes, we do need to iron that one out. Thank you.
Eric?
Okay. Good evening. And I want to say thanks to the volunteer. I know it's long overdue. Um, a lot of this started in twenty twenty, uh, and maybe longer. And because of the pandemic, we didn't have the opportunity, um, to actually do an award. And last year we was going to do it and it didn't happen. So I wanted to make sure that we did it, um, this year. So thank you so very much from the bottom of my heart, because you guys came and helped it out during the time that I needed you. And I really appreciate that. Um, we have, um, Camille just mentioned about the movie. Um, this coming Thursday, we are starting a community choir. So if you would like to participate, we'll be here at five P M. Um, just trying to get it started. Um, the other thing, um, that's it. And just thanks to everyone. And thanks to the staff for all y'all help during the, um, all of the events as well. Because I couldn't do it, you know, by myself and then the whole team of everyone as well. So thanks.
Unity Choir. We're going to start that, uh, right here at the end of the meeting with our first karaoke session. Uh, and, and Ruby is going to be singing, I Will Survive. And, uh,
Singing A C D, have a drink on me.
Uh, no, actually, uh, again, one or two things, several things. First off, thanks all for being here tonight. It's always good to have a full room. And, and what's interesting to me about these is that I go to other people's commission meetings sometimes. County commission meetings. And a lot of times those meetings don't have as many people as we have. Our little town. And then to me, that's a big sign of the level of involvement that we have. Uh, we do have good involvement here and it bears out in the whole volunteer thing. Uh, it doesn't matter what's going on in the community. There are people that are helping other people get it done. And, and, uh, you know, I uh, I'm going to pick on Roland here for a second. You know, he, on Facebook, people will say, there's a tree down on the yellow trail by the curve. Roland, you know, and literally he was out there the day before. He's out that day cutting it down. And it doesn't get paid for that. Doesn't get any, and not even the thanks a lot of times. And they do it because, uh, it needs to get done. And again, in this community, we stick to having good things done. So, uh, appreciate that. And really appreciate Ruby too. Uh, we have had these big volunteer appreciation. It's a couple of times over to support them. Maybe it's you that I will. It takes somebody reminding us to pause for a minute and really say thank you. So, uh, again, I appreciate that so much. Katie, we're going to miss you. Uh, I, I get it though. If somebody told me I could have a job right next to the beach, I would do it too. So.
It's not a bad place to lie.
Uh, no, I probably wouldn't, but I, I'm retired. I'm not taking any jobs anymore. So. Watch out for the weather. We've got bad weather coming tonight. Keep an eye out for that. Uh, again, thanks for coming out and go ahead and ask for a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting.
And also we have refreshments out there. So please enjoy and take.
And, uh, yup.
I am even a tag.
That's gonna, that was gonna be motion and second adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second it.
We have a motion and a second adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned at seven forty-five. We, we normally have our town hall session here, but unless anybody has a real problem with it. Yes, sir. I would. Go ahead and, and take your time quick. And ask for a lift for this. Oh. Oh, interesting. Okay. So I'm going to repeat that for everybody and for the folks on Zoom. Uh, if you have a medical issue that's a non-emergency, somebody falls or something and you need help. Tell nine-one-one that and they call it what? Lift and assist. And they'll send the fire department out and they'll help you get that sorted out without, you know, ambulances and all that coming. So good program, good to know about. Thanks Roland. Uh, we have all sorts of food out there for the volunteers and everybody else who's been here to say thank you to them. So uh, we'll, we'll see you out there. And if anybody does need anything, we're all still here. So grab somebody. And, uh, again, we've got a couple of candidates for office that I'm sure would like to talk to you. So hang out and say hi to them. And, uh, we'll see you next time.